Do I look worried?
I'm almost never worried. Not me. It's all good.
Shaggar Shah.
Join the meeting.
After last week, um, I just think that each one of us, there's three different entities here. There's the board, there's the public, and there's an applicant. And I think that each one of the entities need to treat each other with respect and dignity. Okay? That being said, um, I don't, we don't want to be challenged on the board. We want to have open discussion and, you know, be treated with that respect that I'm asking. Same thing on our end. We will treat the people in the public and the applicant with that same respect. I just think that's a good way to start out because I don't want these meetings, although you have something to say. Uh, remember, we're all volunteers here. And it's very important that it's known that what we're trying to do is just fulfill what the rules of the zoning code are. Uh, personal opinion does fall into that sometimes and might get a little, uh, emotional. But I would suggest that, um, you know, just that handling us with that, that knowledge that you know that we are volunteers here. And we do understand each and every one of you have something to say, and it's very important and near and dear to your hearts. But at the same time, we're gonna listen to you. Not with debate, but we will listen to your comments. Um, and I would suggest that if somebody else stated what you just mentioned, or, you know, or I should say, if you said something and somebody else notices that that person spoke the same issues that you were concerned about, keep your comments brief. We got it. We got it the first time. We, we feel for all of your opinions. But, um, there's a lot of people here tonight, so it could be kind of lengthy also. So we make the point, we'll understand it, we'll go from there. All right? So that being said, the, uh, meeting is officially open. I have the minutes. They need to be approved from, uh, July twentieth to July twenty seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
Vote.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Under new business, you have Menard and, uh, Paluzzi Lot Line Revision Subdivision. The application and plans are circulated to the board and the board was, uh, we scheduled the public hearing for September twenty-eighth. All right?
No, you have to schedule it.
We have to set, I apologize. Uh, so we have to schedule it. So if I could, um, have someone from the applicant come up and speak to Thank you.
The application before the board is a two-watt subdivision with a lot line revision of twelve-point-six-three acre of land. We are proposing a new building lot of, uh, two-point-five-six acres. The property is located in the A-zone, which requires two acre per construction or building lot. The board helped with out at the site yesterday, um, and the heat checks were done and it's eligible for an e-ground septic system. So hopefully we'll have that in place by the public hearing next month. Um, the existing house and accessory structures will remain on four-point-zero-zero acre. And there's a proposal to add a zero-point-three acre parcel and a zero-point-three-seven acre parcel to the adjoining lands, um, which will then have a total of six-point-oh-seven acres with any existing residence.
Okay. Anything to say? No? Paul?
It's just, uh, according to already on the attendance, uh, listed actions, so board will do a, I mean, a very needed super review.
Okay. Dave?
Nothing.
Anyone from the board? Can we, um, motion to hear this, uh, September twenty-eighth for a public hearing, right?
Um, I'm exempt.
Can I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Next is Tanner under, uh, the special use permit. The application and plans are circulated to the board also. And we will, if we can schedule this public hearing for the twenty-eighth of September also. Do we have anyone? Um, to speak on behalf of the applicant or the applicant themselves?
This was the solar ground amount, right?
Right.
Yeah, we told them not to come.
Oh, that's right. We did, didn't we?
Yep.
Here, it was pretty much fine. Maybe solar net, that would have helped out a little bit. I would have remembered, maybe. Okay, can I have a motion to move this?
Thank you.
Public hearing next.
Yeah, I'll make my motions.
Thank you, Sam. Second. Thank you, Gary, and, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing September twenty-eighth?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tanner under, uh, the special use permit. The application and plans are circulated to the board also. And we will, if we can schedule this public hearing for the twenty-eighth of September also. Do we have anyone? Um, to speak on behalf of the applicant or the applicant themselves?
This was the solar ground amount, right?
Right.
Yeah, we told them not to come.
Oh, that's right. We did, didn't we?
Yep.
Here, it was pretty much fine. Maybe solar net, that would have helped out a little bit. I would have remembered, maybe. Okay, can I have a motion to move this?
Thank you.
Public hearing next.
Yeah, I'll make my motions.
Thank you, Sam. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Gary, and, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing next month. Under all business, we have Falcon Ridge Subdivision. Uh, the board is to declare lead agency tonight. Paul, could you speak on behalf of that, or?
Sure. Um, so for this project, as you recall, we had done an initial secret circulation. Uh, other involved and interested agents being indicated the planning board's intention to be the lead agency for purposes of secret review. That was, um, more than a year ago, and so the board, uh, decided that it wanted to recirculate, uh, once the project came back. Uh, the thirty-day period uh, for that circulation has expired. So the action for the board tonight is, is really a simple motion, uh, to establish itself as lead agency for purposes of secret review.
Okay. Now, we motion. So, um, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Now, we are the lead agency. Thank you.
Uh, Scott, one more thing on that.
Uh, gentlemen, uh, you all know the forms for the type-two, um, EAF. Uh, well, uh, I have a long form here. Uh, we will go through that at the next workshop. So, um, staff is asking you to kind of look it over for Falcon Ridge. Um, I have mine here, that one that I do, which is not official because I don't get to vote. Um, and I found, um, some interesting things that you might want to think about. Uh, and we'll, we'll, you know, I'll let you guys think about them before we get to uh, the workshop and then next month we'll unpack them.
Thank you. Um, under public hearings, the first one is Carl Delorenzo Special Use Permit. Public hearing scheduled for today, and we would have to open the public hearing. Yeah. Thank you very much, Paul. So, can we motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing September twenty-eighth? Thank you. Thank you. Next is Tanner under, uh, the special use permit. The application and plans are circulated to the board also. And we will, if we can schedule this public hearing for the twenty-eighth of September also. Do we have anyone? Um, to speak on behalf of the applicant or the applicant themselves?
This was the solar ground amount, right?
Right.
Yeah, we told them not to come.
Oh, that's right. We did, didn't we?
Yep.
Here, it was pretty much fine. Maybe solar net, that would have helped out a little bit. I would have remembered, maybe. Okay, can I have a motion to move this?
Thank you.
Public hearing next.
Yeah, I'll make my motions.
Thank you, Sam. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Gary, and, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing next month. Under all business, we have Falcon Ridge Subdivision. Uh, the board is to declare lead agency tonight. Paul, could you speak on behalf of that, or?
Sure. Um, so for this project, as you recall, we had done an initial secret circulation. Uh, other involved and interested agents being indicating the planning board's intention to be the lead agency for purposes of secret review. That was, um, more than a year ago, and so the board, uh, decided that it wanted to recirculate, uh, once the project came back. Uh, the thirty-day period uh, for that circulation has expired. So the action for the board tonight is, is really a simple motion, uh, to establish itself as lead agency for purposes of secret review.
Okay. Now, we motion. So, um, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Now, we are the lead agency. Thank you.
Uh, Scott, one more thing on that.
Uh, gentlemen, uh, you all know the forms for the type-two, um, EAF. Uh, well, uh, I have a long form here. Uh, we will go through that at the next workshop. So, um, staff is asking you to kind of look it over for Falcon Ridge. Um, I have mine here, that one that I do, which is not official because I don't get to vote. Um, and I've found, um, some interesting things that you might want to think about. Uh, and we'll, we'll, you know, I'll let you guys think about them before we get to uh, the workshop and then next month we'll unpack them.
Thank you. Um, under public hearings, the first one is Carl Delorenzo Special Use Permit. Public hearing scheduled for today, and we would have to open the public hearing. Yeah. Thank you very much, Paul. So, can we motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, all in favor, and any extensions? None?
Can I have someone speak to the project, Dave?
Again, uh, Carl asked me to represent, as he cannot, um, for obvious reasons. Uh, we've all reviewed the map that I'm showing up on the screen. I'm sharing it with people at home as well. Uh, it is a, you know, basically a studio apartment. Uh, there was a wall in the door, uh, where you see flat arch. Um, we had, uh, we had the engineer here, uh, remove that wall. There'll be an arch there now. Um, so it'll be open. That way they can sort of borrow light and ventilation from the other room, and it sort of, um, satisfies our requirement for egress. Uh, it's a, it's at the back of the house. It satisfies the walkout, the great rooms, you know, sort of, of the four of the great rooms decorated at the back. Um, kitchen, um, bath, it's relatively small. So, are there any questions on the layout or the application in general?
I think we've been through this. Um, anyone else on Sam? Any question? Okay. So we give the resolution at this point?
Uh, public hearing?
I'm sorry. I should ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? On Zoom?
Looking.
If you have something to say, raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no, none? We can close the public hearing. Do I get a motion?
Vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Any extensions? Seeing none? Can we address the resolution, Paul?
Sure. If you'd like, we can just focus on the
On the, where, if you don't mind, yeah.
Uh, the board that produces the type-two is directly, we know in our line of unit required. Started with, uh, now therefore it resolved that the planes were hereby grants the applicant approval of this occupation for special use permit when it's set for the apartment subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall undertake project and according to the plan submitted to the board and through this resolution. shall seek prior approval of any amendments to the plans for the project before undertaking any work not approved by this resolution. The applicant shall obtain and comply with all requirements and privileges we have found by building department for the project. This, this rule shall expire. Construction of the project is not commenced and diligent and pursued within one year of this. You have heard the result that it became part of this resolution with the goal by a court of common jurisdiction remaining shall be in full force in effect. You have heard the result that within five days of effective date, this resolution copy shall be filed in the office of the town of Lloyd Town Clerk. And a copy shall also be issued out to the applicant within that same five days.
Shaggar Shah. Join the meeting. That this resolution shall take it back immediately.
And I have a motion to accept the resolution, Grant. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What would the discussion?
Um, I, I sort of agree with what Lou did on plants and what, uh, Dave approved, obviously, but, um, I have a problem with the idea that there's a bedroom in the living room. So, you know, I don't know if you want to talk about that. The guy's out in the main room. Like, that could be his bedroom. But likely, um, anyway. So, uh, I think I would go for it if we put the line in there that the den is not to be a bedroom.
I have no issue with that. I think it's pretty, I mean, anything could happen, and I agree, but I think it's fine. I, I we should have that in there, that the den will not be, become a bedroom.
Well, it's not considered a bedroom by code because it does have a clock.
Now.
It enters the closet. Closet is not a great room.
Code doesn't care about closets, yeah. Um, it is, uh, is na- not named as a bedroom on this plan. Therefore, when we review it, it will not count as a bedroom. However, uh, we, we will issue building permit, um, for this space to convert it based on your approval, um, and it will comply with all of its pieces, um, egress, uh, smoke protection and alarm. Uh, that, you know, all those bits and pieces.
And they're checked periodically anyways to make sure that this doesn't
No, yes.
Not, no.
No, it ultimately is, this is still a single-family dwelling, it's a accessory apartment.
I agree.
And once you get it, unless you're an SDR, we never go back.
Agreed. All right. So, all in favor?
As amended?
As amended, yes. All in favor? As amended, yes. All in favor?
Or a dwelling lot, the board helped with out at the site yesterday. Um, and the heat tests were done and it's eligible for an E ground septic system. So hopefully we'll have that in place by the public hearing next month. Um, the existing house and accessory structures will remain on four point zero zero acre. And there's a proposal to add a zero point three acre parcel and a zero point three seven acre parcel. To the adjoining lands, um, which will then have a total of six point oh seven acres with any existing residence.
Anything to say? No? Paul?
It's just, uh, quite drawn to have the attendance and listed actions of board will do a.
Okay. Dave?
Nothing.
Nothing? Anyone from the board? Can we, um, motion to hear this, uh, September twenty eighth of a public hearing, right?
Uh, I'm exempt.
Can I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing September twenty eighth?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tanner under, uh, the special use permit, the application and plans circulated to the board also. And we will, if we can schedule this public hearing for the twenty eighth of September also, do we have anyone? Um, to speak on behalf of the applicant? Or the applicant themselves?
This was the solar ground amount, right?
Right.
Yeah, we told them not to come.
Oh, that's right, we did, didn't we?
Yep.
Maybe solar net, that would have helped out a little bit, I would remember maybe. Okay, can I have a motion to move this? Public hearing next. Thank you, sound second. Thank you, Jerry, and, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing next month. Under all business, we have Falcon Ridge subdivision, uh, the board is to declare lead agency tonight, Paul, could you speak on behalf of that or?
Sure, um, so for this project, as you recall, we had done an initial seeker circulation, uh, other. Involved and interested agents being indicated the planning board's intention to be the lead agency. For purposes of secret review, that was, um, more than a year ago. And so the board, uh, decided that it wanted to recirculate, uh, once the project came back. Uh, the thirty day period, uh, for that circulation has expired. So the action for the board tonight is is really a simple motion, uh, to establish itself. As lead agency for purposes of secret review.
Okay, motion? So, um. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Now, we are the lead agency, thank you.
Uh, Scott, one more thing on that.
Uh, gentlemen, uh, you all know the forms for the type two, um, EAF. Uh, well, uh, I have a long form here, uh, we will go through that at our next workshop. So, um, staff is asking you to kind of look it over for Falcon Ridge. Um, I have mine here, that one that I do, which is not official because I don't get to vote. Um, and I found, um, some interesting things that you might want to think about. Uh, and we'll, we'll, you know, I'll let you guys think about them before we get to, uh, the workshop and then. Next month we'll unpack them.
Thank you. Um, under public hearings, the first one is Carl Delorenzo, special use permit. Public hearing scheduled for today and we would have to open the public hearing. Yeah. Thank you very much, Paul. So can we motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all in favor and any extensions, none? And I had someone speak to the project, Dave?
Again, uh, Carl asked me to represent as he cannot, um. For obvious reasons, uh, we've all reviewed the map that I'm showing up on the screen, I'm sharing it with people at home as well. Uh, it is a, you know, basically a studio apartment, uh, there was a wall in the door, uh, where you see flat arch. Um, we had, uh, we had the engineer here, uh, remove that wall, it will be an arch there now. Um, so it'll be open, that way they can sort of borrow light and ventilation from the other room and it sort of, um. Satisfies our requirement for egress. Uh, it's a, it's at the back of the house, it's downstairs, the walkout, the great rooms, you know, sort of, of the. Four of the great rooms decorated at the back. Um, kitchen, um, bath, it's relatively small, so are there any questions on the layout or? The application in general?
I think we've been through this, um, anyone else on Sam, any question? And? So we give the resolution at this point? Uh, public hearing? I'm sorry, I should ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? On Zoom?
Looking.
If you have something to say, raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no, none, we can close the public hearing, do I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none, can we address the resolution, Paul?
Sure. If you'd like me to just focus on the.
Uh, the where, if you don't mind, yeah.
Started with, uh, now therefore. You resolve that the planes were hereby grants the applicant approval of this occupation for a special unit, but it's a free apartment subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall undertake project and according to the plan submitted to the board and through this resolution. shall seek prior approval of any amendments to the plans for the project. Before undertaking any work not approved by this resolution. Yeah, and shall obtain comply with all required building permits from the county building department for the project. This, this will show expire construction of the project is not commenced and diligent and pursued within one year of this. In front of the result that it became part of this resolution was denied by a court of common jurisdiction remaining shall be enforced in effect. In front of the result that within five days is detected danger, this resolution copy shall be filed in the office of the town of Lloyd Town Clerk. And a copy shall also be issued out to the applicant within that same five days.
Join the meeting.
That this resolution shall take it back immediately.
And I have a motion to accept the resolution granted, second? All in favor?
Aye.
What would discussion?
Um, I, I sort of agree with what. Lou did on plants and what, uh, they approved obviously, but. Um, I have a problem with the idea that there's a bedroom in the room. So, you know, I don't know if you want to talk about that, the guy's out in the main room. Like, that could be his bedroom. But likely, um. Anyway. So, uh, I think I would go forward if we put the line in there that the den is not to be bedroom.
I have no issue with that, I think it's pretty, I mean, anything could happen, I agree, but I think it's fine, I, I. We should have that in there, that the den will not be become a bedroom.
Well, it's not considered bedroom by code because it does have clock.
Now.
It enters the closet, closet is not a great room.
Code doesn't care about closets, yeah. Um, it is, uh, is na- not named as a bedroom on this plan.
Right.
Therefore, when we review it, it will not count as a bedroom, however, uh, we, we will issue building permit, um, for this space. To convert it based on your approval, um, and it will comply with all of its pieces, um, egress, uh, smoke protection and alarm. Uh, that, you know, all those bits and pieces.
And they're checked periodically anyways to make sure that it doesn't.
Not, yes.
Not, no.
No, it ultimately is, this is still a single family dwelling, it's a accessory apartment, I think, a dwelling. And once you get it, unless you're an SDR, we never go back.
Agreed. Alright. So, all in favor? Is that what you said?
As amended?
As amended, yes. All in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Alright. Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none, the motion for the resolution is approved. As amended. Next is surprise photography, special use permit. The public hearing is scheduled for August twenty fourth. And we would have to open, I'll have you speak to it first, how's that?
Yeah, just let the public know what it is you're doing and what you're applying for.
Um, my name's Lloyd Price, I am a professional portrait photographer. Here in Highland, I have been, uh, professional for the last eighteen years. Um, I've been renting over in Pixie, a studio for. Pretty few years, but it's always been my dream to build a home studio where I could. Everybody wants to have more access to their home and their work. Um, before the pandemic, we bought a house in the neighborhood that, from the plan that allowed me to do that. Um, I'm here today, and obviously I have a building being built right now. Which I'm very excited about and. That's about it, I am also out there, you know, this is my profession, I don't have another job. It's what I do and then I'm award winning, I won best in the Hudson Valley three times. Um, okay, I did this very seriously, pay a lot of taxes and, uh.
Anyone from Sam, have any comments, Paul? How about the board, any questions?
My question is, how many comments were needed both the first floor and the upper?
Um, do you mind if I? My, my art.
Absolutely, bring it on, come on on.
Well, I'm Sean Williams on the Arctic project. Questions, yes, uh, I don't have that number in front of me, but I believe the contractor said it's four hundred and that sounds. Uh, the studio itself is, I think, I believe, four hundred with a, a bathroom space and it's about the same above.
Four hundred square feet, right, two floors, yeah.
I can clarify, based on the resolution, we have, uh, eight hundred and eighty minutes.
That, that was, I looked at the map, I think. Hmm, that didn't tie into that, that, that's the way.
It sounded like the number I took off the drugs.
Bring, bring the microphone a little closer so we can hear you.
Um, the number is below four hundred because the second floor is not a whole floor, there's the stairwells open. Um, as well as wall spaces and things, but I believe for the purposes of tonight's, we're taking gross footage. Um, which is twenty nine thirty each floor.
Anyone else? Question? Comments, concern?
Uh, I guess so, uh, I'm not quite sure on the plan here, but, but, um, looking at, uh. The survey and there's a line, there's a, uh, rectangle that says formwork. Is that where the building is?
Yes.
That, yes. Are you, who are you, who are you, the builder again?
Yeah.
I'm waiting, are you talking about to the fun? You gotta come see it, this.
But I, I didn't know what I was getting back here, so don't mind me, I, yeah.
You're gonna have to speak in a microphone if we ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
This is where we get it.
So Dave has one of these monitors.
I'm not using it. Push the button, you have to.
Hello, I'm Joe Gatto. Hi, I'm Joe Gatto.
There we go.
Hello. I'm Joe Gatto and, what was the question again?
Is that where, is that where the building is?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay, any other questions? That's all we have right here.
I have, we have, we have elevations.
Yeah, all the base drawings up too. Hey, there you go. Thanks, Bill.
Hello?
You're awesome.
Russ Gilmore, I'd like to say something if I may.
Sure, we didn't get there yet, but we're still talking about the, uh, we're not in public hearing yet.
Okay, thank you, I'll wait, I'll wait, thank you.
Um, so any other questions?
My only question is, Dave, is this worth the calculation that you did? You call a hundred? Thirty percent?
And, uh, the reason, the reason they're here for a type two is the size of the building. Yeah, um, so total square footage, that's not a type one. Um, because that could, yeah, that's almost no structure, really, uh, if there's a, it's, it's, excuse me, accessory structure that is over a certain square footage. That trips are the type two, and here we are.
And I thought that the limitation was about thirty percent of the size of the house.
I'll pull the code, I have the code somewhere. Definition, maybe?
Need a definition?
Yeah, so, uh, the way the code reads, uh, for a class, class one home occupation. Um, it's a, it's a space, uh, that is, does not occupy more than five hundred square feet. Or of course floor area or twenty percent of the gross floor area of the principal building. Um, the class two is anything which occupies an area greater than that. Of a class one home occupation, so more than five hundred feet.
My thoughts is that's a vision, yeah, that's, it's saying it can be more than fifteen hundred.
Or thirty, or thirty percent, maximum, um. Up to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet, uh, or thirty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwell.
That's very happy to be concerned, thirty percent of the gross, the principal residence, which is under three thousand.
Well, so here's the fun part, um. Paul, it's an or.
And, and that's.
Hmm, you're right, whichever is less. About to unpack the building, I don't know, I don't know the house.
Look at the island on the, uh, Austin County.
Uh, yeah, that's not, yeah.
That it's about.
We'll, we'll, we'll pull the building plans.
That's how it is, it's the same way, each different use, uh, as for footage, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll pull the, we'll pull the building plans, actually, the, the building's not that old, but.
Dave, could we go back to the pitch and structure?
Sure. Uh, where?
We have an internal on buildings? Like, are there gonna be bathrooms in it?
Yep.
If there is a.
Uh, so pull back, so the septic, in the current septic, how many bedrooms is the main area? And how many bedrooms is this?
That's a no bedroom.
I know bedrooms, but, here's our problem. You turn after this improvement, it's still, you turn around and sell it, somebody can come back. For the accessory structure.
Well, that happened, that's probably twenty years now and.
That could happen, Paul. Um, alright, so the septic can handle both?
Scott, I, I do. Don't we have somewhere in your application, Dave, that the principal building is twenty, twenty nine hundred and fifty?
I will look.
So, this is less than thirty percent?
No, it's not. It's twelve hundred square feet, no.
But. I have the building, that's where I started, the question is how big is the space moving, it's twelve hundred feet, it's over.
There's an or, like you said.
Well, it's, it is, it is whatever is less. In the application, I don't have it, Paul.
I want to say it was a fifteen hundred max?
Fifteen max, uh, or thirty percent of the gross floor area of the principal building. But we have public hearing tonight, since.
So, at this point, we can open the public hearings, if we have a motion to do so.
Well, we. Why don't we have the applicant come away from the table and then people?
We can do that, I just wanted to open the public.
Great, first, so, we're kind of done with you guys at this point, if we can, what we'll do is have people who want to speak on behalf or against the project. We'll have them come up and sit here and speak, if that's okay. Yes, you can, you, you can answer their questions when we're done, so we'll hear everything and then you might only have five questions, I don't know, you. If you go back and forth, it's just like I said, no debate, just give them the information they need, so. If we could, um, second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions, public hearing's open? So now, if you don't mind. Uh, Russ Gilmore, since you were the first person, raise your hand on Zoom.
Even if you get a picture.
Speak now.
It's gross floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, most of the board members know me, I know you, how we doing? I just want to speak on behalf of the surprise family who's doing this project. I've known them more than fifteen years, they, Melissa started her business, uh, when she was my neighbor, direct neighbor. And I want to assure you and the board. That this business is not high volume, high traffic kind of commercial business, it's not that type of business. And, uh, as for Melissa herself, I consider her a very honorable person, she says she's gonna do storage, it's gonna be storage. If she's just gonna have clients in there, uh, doing whatever they need to do with photography, that's all it'll be doing. And I simply wanted to come here and express that and put myself out there, saying that I certainly speak up for her.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public on Zoom or in the public? Ma'am, if you don't mind, come up and state your name.
Good evening, everybody.
Give you.
My name is Sarah Ryan.
Speak into the microphone, please, thank you.
I am Sarah Ryan, I am, uh, Vanwater, Vanwater, on behalf of David Conklin and some labor and property owners. For opposing the construction of this building. Uh, as we went through before, the code as it's written, states that a class two home occupation. Uh, can be up to fifteen hundred square feet gross floor area. Or thirty percent of the gross floor area of the principal building, whichever is the lesser of the numbers. Here the principal building according to Austin County parcel records, uh, has a gross floor area of two thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet. Thirty percent of that square footage is eight hundred and eighty square feet. What is the bonus as well over that number? Additionally, uh, this project, uh, has started, there's significant construction that has already occurred. Without the benefit of the site plan, especially use permit, which is against the provisions of the home. Preserving code section one hundred dash fifty three, the eleven, states that no construction shall be started until site plan. Here at a minimum of the construction proceeds, until there are approvals here. Um. Additionally, uh. The, the first floor is about six hundred and fifty one square feet. The second floor is about five eighty nine square feet. Mr. Conklin actually, uh, hired his own architect to review the plans, come up with the numbers. And now.
Here.
Do. The measurements.
Mind if I? Hold on, hold on. Um, after she's done, then we'll have a chance to direct other people.
Sorry, so as the project is proposed right now, it does not. Um, it is well over what is allowed under current class, you will not feature. Additionally, uh, just a review of the application, the environmental assessment form is a plea. Uh, it even indicates that this may be outside of the character of the neighborhood. As written by the.
Okay. Thank you, don't, sir, if you don't mind coming up and speak, say your name.
My name is Justin Surprise, I. The way, all one fifty one, I'm saying. It was my impression that you heard this, of this, because that, the purpose of this discussion here. Was about the special permit, not about the building itself. I'm not saying that that shouldn't be discussed in some forum, but. Everything that was discussed here has nothing to do with target of the studio, it isn't, it is just about the structure itself, which. You know, my, my neighbor has been against from the very beginning, so. If, if that's what we're here to discuss, great, but I, I was under the impression this was about.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I believe. Name, sir? My name is David Conklin and I live at one sixty one Max Lane, next door to one fifty one, like, Max Lane. I had the opportunity to come to a planning board meeting in June, just to see how it worked and was invited at the end of it. To speak, and at that time I indicated that I live. On a two acre residential zone and property. And all of the neighborhood on Max Lane is in fact, uh, two acre residential zone. I think I said at that time, we were the only two acre resident, residentially zoned neighborhood south of the Mid Hudson Bridge. Um, everything north of the Mid Hudson Bridge is along the Hudson River, I have told my neighbors, I think we're very fortunate about where we live. Uh, others will speak tonight also, and we all back up to the, uh, Franny Reef State Park. And we are very fortunate and we really do like our neighborhood and where we live. What I have given you, I will go through very quickly, uh, the first was what the, uh, the building ad permit application was. And as you see under the structure side, it says thirty four by twenty six, and it's actually twelve hundred and forty square feet. The next is the, uh, building permit. That, uh, was issued by the town, uh, building department. And, um, as you can see also, uh, it is a permit for an accessory structure. They located at one fifty one Max Lane. The next is, uh, the application form for the reason that we're here tonight, and that is the hearing on a C two. A home occupancy application, which requires, uh, special permit. Special use permit and a site plan approval. So it is for a C two home occupation permit. As you can see, uh, from the application form, uh, it was submitted by surprise photography for the purpose of a home studio. The next page says, uh, surprise photography studio auxiliary building. It's actually, um, an accessory building, but a s- auxiliary building as home studio. Uh, I would like to say that upon information and belief, I think was already stated this evening. This is really a request to relocate an existing business. That had been located in Piscia for a period of time, uh, it is, uh, an LLC with the New York State. Um, it's also, um. A part of the State Department of Taxation and Finance, uh, authority to, uh, collect taxes on any, um. Thing that they, they sell that would be taxable. Um. So you're really talking about locating a surprise photography LLC. Conduct business, uh, of a four hundred and forty square foot building. And one fifty one. The conduct business of a 1,440 square foot building in 151 Max Lane. Now, as Anthony said, the building is already in progress. And I would like to speak to that. Right now, the accessory building that's being built is 1,440 gross square feet. There is an existing shed on the property that was moved, but is still on the property, and it is 240 gross square feet. The total of the two together is 1,480 gross square feet. That's just the accessory structures. The principal building on the 2.05 acre lot is 2,960 gross square feet. So the 1,480 gross square feet of the two accessory buildings is 50% or one half of the total gross square feet of the principal building of 2,960 gross square feet. Even if there is a home occupation in that building, the two of them together, the two accessory buildings are 50%, one half of the gross square feet of the principal building, the residence on the property. I believe that the character of the neighborhood is detrimentally affected and altered because of this. There are no other properties in the neighborhood that have more than a shed, and this property will have half, half square footage of the house in accessory buildings. I'd like to say, I saw that we've been talking about this for a while. And I think that as the attorney said, we really need to deal with what we have, which is a building that's too large for home occupation and a building that together has two accessory buildings that it will have for the square footage of the principal building.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
I will be really quick. Hi, I'm Jessica Westover. I've lived in Midland about 20 years and I've known Melissa just about that length of time. And since I have known Melissa all that time, she has been exceedingly generous with her skills, her profession in the community, whether it be our schools, from elementary schools to high school, families in need in the community. And I think it would be very beneficial to, to have her skills here rather than across the river.
Thank you.
Well, I'm telling Melissa, and again, I'm the architect for the project. I just wanted to swing a few things in regards to the concept we just made. First of all, the building itself is the size of a two car garage. It is designed to be converted to a two car garage when she doesn't want to be using this studio anymore. So it's not abnormally large for the site. And to make the argument that was just made, having a two car garage would be out of character for a two acre lots. I don't see how you could really make that argument. The way this came about was that I was not counting the second story as part of the studio. I still did not realize that that was going to be part of the business. Because it is a detached structure, the zoning code, the decision came back that we had to count the whole building. That's why we have this over square footage issue. That's what we're here asking for permission for. The building itself is fully within zoning rights. There is nothing wrong with it. She's fully allowed to build this building with no objections from anybody. Operating as a business because that second floor is there for future use. Her intended use is only storage. It's not even intended to be finished with any other contributions at the time. I understand the argument that things can change down the road, but really the issue we're talking about here today is that extra square footage on the second floor. And now that throws a business that isn't using that over the limit. So I just wanted to put it in perspective, but the building we're talking about is a two car garage. It's not an outrageous element being added to the set.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public? Dana? County legislator here. This is very nice. Thank you for coming.
I stated my name is Julie Hanksit. I've lived here in Highland all my life. I'm here and just to speak about Melissa and her character. And also for the contractor, both of those people are on the up and up and do many things for the community. I know that from the ghetto, they have tried to do the right thing, wanted the right channels. And for her, what she does for people. She makes memories for people, people that are in need, people to remember, people that are lost. As well as wonderful things like new babies and weddings, et cetera. But I know that they work very hard for this, given the livelihood, and I'm just here in support of her in this project.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hello, I'm Jackie Applehorn, and I reside with David Conklin at 161 Max Lane. I also own the home. And I would like to say first of all, this is not to do, anything to do with Melissa's character. We don't know each other well, but any experience I've had with her one on one has been very positive. What this is about is where we live. When we bought our home nine years ago, part of the deed included a deed restriction that expired in 2018. But it, it precluded any structure. The first item is no lot shall be used except for residential purposes, and no building or structure shall be erected on any lot except a one family house and garage, a pertinent there too. And although that deed restriction ran out in 2018, it certainly speaks to the character of the neighborhood and what we were buying into. Two acres is spacious and, as David said, bordering Franny Reef State Park. It's just, it's just ideal. And having a business operate next door to us is not, not what we signed up for. We have other neighbors who've been there much longer and who similarly are effective on this. And so the building's there. It's, it's big. It looks a lot bigger than a two car garage. But the code says you can't have a business operating in that size structure. And so seems to be pretty cut and dry.
Inspired. Thank you.
Scott.
I see a woman named Julie on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Julie Clogga. I'm at 100 Max Lane. And I just want to speak to that, what does, what is she here for? She's here for the permit for her business, not about the building, about the business. And she's like, you, you submit the permit based upon what you're going to be doing here. And she's doing photography. She's not doing like car mechanics or something else. That's what the permit is written for, is photography. She's having babies come in maternity. It's not like there's going to be this crazy amount of traffic that they're making it out to be. So I just want to say that not the entire neighborhood is not, you know, against this. There is support to it in our neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Anyone else here wants to speak on behalf of or against the project?
Yes, hello, my name is Dolph Slackover. I live at 171 Max Lane. My wife and I have been there since 1996. It's a dead end road. I'm against having a business in the neighborhood. There are no other businesses there. It's a residential neighborhood. You can't tell me it's not going to add traffic down Max Lane. I mean, up at the top of the road, there's kids that play all the time. They got signed out there to slow down, and now you want to introduce more traffic on the road where these little kids play. I'm just, I just do not want to see this. I didn't buy the house for a business sector. It's a residential neighborhood. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Come on, man.
Little rebuttal regarding that. Saying that there's no other businesses on our street is actually false. There's two. My neighbor across the street has a home business. He might have not an accessory building for it, but she does have a home business. And there's also, you can look on any Google map, there's a flooring company for houses up there. They had a large structure in the background. And so there are several businesses on their street. I am going to also, if you think for the claim that there's children, I have children. I have three children who are from the outside. They have their friends over. So there's constantly children and noise on my side of the street. As mentioned in our last meeting, I am a low volume, high end portrait photographer. I might have two sessions a week in my house. Therefore, I'm not leaving. The traffic is that one person coming to me. And that's what I can say.
Thank you. Amanda?
Well, he's in the second row. But I just wanted to see that it's the neighbor's position that I represent, that this board is in fact not respectfully centered, that it's not empowered to grant an application for a project if I was to zone put that straight. Additionally, if the board does choose to propose a public hearing tonight, we just request that it remain open for very submissions.
Dave?
Yeah, thank you. To the attorney's point, I think without looking at the plans, I would agree if the building is oversized. Paul and I, I think in our agreement that, that this board can refer applications to the zoning board during your review. I do agree, keeping the public hearing open for written or oral comment in the future is appropriate. And then we, we would sort of internally send it to the, to the ZBIA. If, if the applicant is willing.
Your idea of point of clarification was we've heard different numbers loaded. So I think clarifying that is important, but if they are over what would be allowed, then referring it to the ZBIA would be appropriate.
Well, we've been clarification and then.
We'll pull the mass.
Yeah, and then refer to zoning.
Yeah. So if, if, if that's the board's sense, if the number is over what would be allowed, a referral would be appropriate, and we'll just go ahead and make that happen.
Sure. Is there any other questions that I worth to? Would a reduction of the size of the building be under 88 square feet be an alternative to going to the BBA?
Absolutely. I think within, I think that's the whole point of discussion would be with the applicant.
I would suggest, right, I would suggest that would be something that we would refer to ZBIA and let them unpack alternatives.
Yeah.
You know, so.
David Conklin, again, I would just like to request that you do make a decision on the altering of the character of the community and address the issue of the two accessory buildings, the 50% of the square foot of the principal building. They're building that thing right now. One thing that I did not mention before is that we talk about size a lot, but we gloss over the life expectancy of the building. We're talking about 40 years. I came to you in June and this is August. 15 days? 40 years is 13,600 days. 13,600 days, that building is going to be on that plot. And you and the owners of the building are going to be going back and forth all the time is what's allowable, what's not allowable, what can we do? Because it's big.
Like just to clarify for the record, Mr. Conklin, once this is back in front of the planning board, you are, you would be applying the special use permit standards, which would take into account a community character. But at this point, the, my understanding is the board is going to simply continue the hearing.
Yes.
And either have it referred to the ZBIA or come back or further planning or review if the size of the building is.
Yes, sorry. Okay. So is there anything from the rest of the board telling a question? I probably, anybody?
I'd like to clear up one thing. Just Paul mentioned about the shed on their property. Dave, is that included in the gross? For the junk?
No, just the, just the space for which they use when, when consumed.
Anyone else? And so we'll refer that to the zoning board and then push this hearing off again for the next one.
Someone not. Or direct.
Yeah. I'm good.
So surprise, for the record, this is surprise, my office will be in contact with you about ZBIA dates for next month. And we'll tee it up for them, this application and the discussion which has occurred here. You know, we'll, we'll sort of package that together for the ZBIA to get it. Okay, thanks.
You said that the shed, the fine count and the calculation. It is however, an accessory building on the property. The calculation for the square footage of the 1,420 square foot accessory building compared to the principal structure is 42%.
Thank you. So we'll push the public hearing off for next month.
You're just leave it open.
And leave it open. We're getting the other information and sending it off to the zoning board from here. Thank you. I don't know if everybody was going to stay or start getting up before I went on.
Can I go?
You can.
Okay.
Thank you. Good.
I'm great.
I have. Next is the Papino food lot line revision. Looking for Ms. Brooks. Public hearing scheduled for August 24th and we'll open the public hearing when 2:30 pounds and then. It's still open if I'm not mistaken, right?
No, this is the new one.
This is the new, this is the. Sorry, I got the. Okay, this is your. Go ahead, keep finding your.
The lot line revision before the board is the addition of a 1.59 acre parcel of land to an existing 4.62 acre parcel to increase the lot size of an existing commercial site to 6.21 acres inside. This was a pre-existing, non-conforming site that was over density. We are taking the footprint of a former concrete foundation and putting a whole building on top of it. We were the zoning board of appeals for an area variance for the coverage. We did have the alternative of adding this additional parcel. So we are back before the planning board and have determined that the zoning board of appeals no longer needs to take action on it. Right.
Anyone from the set?
No.
I have to do it for you.
Yeah, as far as a lot line is all pretty straightforward. They are both awesome.
Any?
So yeah, this is the public, public hearing. So.
Yeah, so I'd like to open the public hearing in motion, please. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extension? Seeing none. Hearing is open. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? Anyone from Zoom land?
This is. This is, uh, for the lot line revision.
Going to separate or going together?
Nope, separate. Yeah, separate, two separate actions.
Oh, no, it's exciting. You want me to talk about both at the same time or you want me to do it?
Oh, if you have a lot line.
If you have a lot line, comment.
Here.
Alright, so I am the owner of Three O Eight Station Road, which is the neighboring property. The lot line revision, uh, we are okay with adding that lot or that piece of property to.
Sir, just what's your name?
Ryan Mellet, sorry. The only stipulation of the request is that on the backside of the property that's being added, that there's a hundred foot buffer. Which is at the discretion on the planning board being added to that lot. Currently, it is a fifty to a hundred foot at the discretion of the board. We have said it'd be a hundred feet to match what is on the opposite side of our farm, the sun. That was put in place for the south Bay Bridge subdivision. So.
I think that's why.
Your house is behind here?
No, next door.
Our property is next door.
It's right here.
Three O Eight Station Road, it is the five acre parcel. Right there.
The house is going to go somewhere here.
No house on the property yet.
Not yet.
Might get a house there.
Come on.
There will be a house there, but at the same time, it's five acres and it wouldn't be real long.
So the lot line revision, the parcel A that he's referring to is actually surrounded by lands of timbermen and that's not a but, um, land, so.
It does not affect my property, but it affects my mother-in-law and my family farm, which is part of our whole farm.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. He said that it affected your property, so I just wanted to clarify that.
This is the area we've already talked about for fifty feet? No. Never, that's why.
Yeah, so, so what he, what he's referencing is the back of the property?
Okay, that's, that way. I, I, thank you.
So that would be the west side of the front.
West, uh, southwest, uh, southeast.
Southeast, southeast, okay.
Yeah, but down in here.
Yeah, but you had it before. You were doing the other side of the property on the land.
And a lot of people probably can't hear me. The hundred foot, uh, market, no, I want you, I want you to give us the song in a minute. Um, the hundred foot, uh, um, uh, hanging over right here. You just transfer that distance down here or it'll probably be somewhere in this, this location.
That's only fifty feet.
That's a hundred feet. I'm looking at it. It's, it's, uh, fifty and fifty.
Yeah, but the fifty thought is on my side, so currently right.
Right, but I'm, what I'm saying is the whole distance is a hundred feet. Fifty and fifty, I, I, I wasn't good at math. I swear to God. That's why I went into literature, but. But it, but the fifty and fifty, I'm ninety-nine because I can do quarters. Um, so, uh, so it's somewhere in this location.
And so we belong to the south part of the park.
Way in the back.
You're asking for a hundred feet buffer instead of fifty. Because your family's land is back there.
The agricultural buffer, yes, the agricultural buffer about the discretion of the planning board for fifty to a hundred feet.
I think.
Oh, you're right.
The application for the board is, um.
Not a lot.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public? On Zoom? Help me out there, Dave.
I got that. Uh, no one in the public appears to be inclined to speak through this.
Okay. So. Okay, want to close the public hearing? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, well, anyone opposed? Any extensions? Seeing none? Public hearing closed. Do you have a draft on this?
We do. Yeah, I should have been. Uh, personally, I didn't want to underscore that it would not be inappropriate. If there were subdivision or a lot line, it's also going to be a legal plan, create something for the, the sort of sound indicated. Um, so I'll just pick up this is. Uh, because it's a lot line adjustment. To keep in mind two actions, so no further environmental review is required. Uh, now therefore being resolved, like we're going to do, uh, the subdivision, my way of influencing the, the New York State town law. Trying to define wage and filings for a public hearing on file subdivision class, that will be will by the applicant. You have further resolved the first one to subdivision regulations. And New York State town law, trying to provide proof, conventionally filed subdivision class. The project will be prepared by the whole point associating the same. Date of June of twenty twenty-three and a brief plaque. The observer resolved the first one to the subdivision regulation for New York State town law. The planning board chairman is hereby authorized signing a brief plaque on satisfactory holding conditions. How we know the paper will change here that all outstanding comments have been satisfied. Signature of the approved plaque by the surveyor and property owner of the box, the box dividing on that. Later, I may be so to the town board. On crucial requirements to the commission approval, the chairman should find a group of nearby certifying it as final. Uh, that person to the subdivision regulations that have potential report. The approved final plaque to the Ulster County clerk's office. In ninety days after the signing by the planning board chairman. Where it shall be null and void. The firm is all the six copies and the approved final plaque during the fourth day of the Ulster County clerk. Shall be obtained and transferred to the town clerk in thirty days to the data filing for distribution through the planning board. Taxes, taxes, uh, and, uh, towns, uh, having force in the visions. We have further resolved that then part of this resolution is enabled by court of law jurisdiction, remaining issued to. We have further resolved that within five days, the effective date of this resolution, the county shall be filed. And the office of the town clerk, like, shall be also mailed to the applicant in that period. And we have further resolved that this resolution shall be attached to the.
Madam, I'm voting to accept the resolution in red.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Resolution is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, our continued public hearing. So these are opened already and, um, would be Papino's food amended site plan. Uh, three oh four station road section block and lot number eighty-six point one, there's one. There's twenty-two point one hundred and. Patty?
So we have, um. Presented a plan before the planning board. As we mentioned last week at the workshop meeting. Um, we met the landscaper out there, um. And we have added to the map the location of some of the, the larger deciduous trees that are located on the adjacent, um, parcel land. Um, and one Miller. We are proposing at this point in time, a twenty-five foot agricultural buffer zone with a planting area. Uh, to encompass the open area that previously had been mowed. Um, we did stake out, uh, in the field, uh, twenty-five foot buffer line, um, a few weeks ago. With Mr. Rubicio, so that he would be able to direct his, um, staff not to mow that area anymore and to allow it to grow up and be naturalized. We have proposed that there would be five evergreen trees, three oaks and two maple trees, four feet and six feet in height. To be randomly planted as determined by the landscaper. Um, and additionally, again, no mowing is to occur within that twenty-five foot equally boundary line and the areas to be returned to a naturalized state. Um, we did talk to Mr. Rubio about the possibility of planting the trees up on a berm. Um, the problem that he said that happens when you try to plant trees up in a berm is a couple. Number one, the roots start growing very quickly in the berm area because it's a soft soil and it's even for them to grow. When they hit, we need more difficult soils and to plant these trees. Root anymore and that oftentimes will kill the trees. The other problem with putting them on the berm is as far as water retention for the roots, it's more difficult for them. But for those reasons, he did not feel that it was appropriate. He felt it would be much better to, um, excavate the ground that's there now and plant the trees that way because then. They, from the very beginning, become, um. Normalized in the soil in which they're introduced and like. I fit in regard, right now, there are other outstanding items that need to be addressed engineering-wise and detail-wise. But the applicant, before he proceeds with that, wants to try to resolve this issue because this seems to be. Obviously, the, the most concerning issue to the board and the general public.
Anyone, um, from the set? Comments?
Uh, yeah, I haven't had, I haven't seen any plans yet. Um, I think a couple of things we talked about was the gate, right, that's going to be added. Um, and I just kind of looking at it now and just want to clarify the, the new parking area there, that's going to be. Blacktop, that'll be paved.
Correct.
Yeah. And it's gates.
Yeah, two gates, right. Paul? Dave? Anyone from the board?
Patty, I got a question. So. You're going to remove the berm to plant the trees?
No, the berm is not on land of the applicant. The berm is on adjacent land of Anselone Miller. But that berm will remain in place. I mean, that is the other thing that we've shown is we've added some additional spot elevations. So basically, the slope of land from approximately, um, between twenty-five, I'm going to say twenty-five feet is the average. On lands of Miller and Anselone down to the boundary line. Is ranging in grade between sixty and eighty percent. So it's a rather steep slope there right now. I know that the neighbors, um, want to be able to utilize their property. Right up to the boundary line and we heard the right to cut all those trees down. But again, I would contend that the only way they're going to actually be able to utilize that for planting our agricultural purposes is that they put up a ten-foot retaining wall to be able to fill it to use up to the boundary line. So we're just looking for something that is, um, reasonable and equitable. We agree with the agricultural buffer rules and regulations and what they're intended to achieve. Um, I understand that when you're up against a residential neighborhood where houses have not been built yet. That that can be a great concern. The situation we have here is totally different because these two properties have been coexisting with their same uses for over twenty years. Right in time when this, um, business was originally approved. Um, this agricultural buffer did not exist. So. The property existed here for approximately six years before that agricultural buffer was put into place. So this is more or less a pre-existing, um, use to the site. Um, I did some research on it. I found the railroad tracks back from nineteen sixteen and this building is shown on that. At that point in time, the Anselone property was labeled as a vineyard. I had a survey. Um, of this property that was done in nineteen sixty-nine. And at that point in time, the railroad tracks were still in place. And you can see that there were two sidings actually going into this building. So this has been a commercially utilized property. For as long as the agriculture has existed on the adjacent property. And we certainly understand the neighbor's concerns. We're trying to mitigate them to the greatest extent possible. While at the same time being reasonable in what the expectations are on both sides.
What was it? Be a trees instead of.
Um, he put those ten trees and I had suggested that they all be evergreens and he said that. He did not feel that would be appropriate and that it would look a lot more unnaturalized if he put in. The five evergreens, three oaks and two maples was.
And the amount of time in order to get that buffer, the actual buffer, because they're small trees we're talking about. So he planted them on the property. And I believe the berm was what eight feet difference?
Um.
So these will be below the berm for a while.
They will be.
That's my concern on it. It's still, you know, for a substantial amount of time, you get the oaks to grow that long or the evergreens to grow. High enough to where it's actually helping with, with, with the issue.
Right, and I guess the question is, what are we buffering?
Right. Well, we, we were talking about having that spray going over into the other property. That's one thing. So that's my concern. I don't know if anyone else on the board has any concern on that.
It's been here since the beginning of time. It's, it's a rare location. I mean, we're trying to make a decent effort to put the tree there and it's going to take six or seven or ten years to grow, but. You know, it's, it's, it's not everything you need to grow. I have one thing, I mean, looking at the grading, um, Patty, it looks like, looks like the, the embankment is about twelve feet high. Um, kind of at the center of the building, then it looks like it goes down as you go towards Station Road. Is that, that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Depending on where you are and, you know, whether.
I got it.
Might get better screen.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, concern?
This is, I think, all we've done. It looks, at first glance here, it looks to me like you're promoting, but trees over on someone else's land. Shouldn't you be planting the land of your applicant?
I'm, I'm showing the trees that are existing on the adjoining neighborhood property.
The trees you're discussing were going to be in this area?
Correct. I didn't show the exact placement because when I tried to pin the landscaper to what tree are you putting where. Um, he said, please let me decide that when I bring the trees out here and decide which tree is most appropriate to put where. And that's why we put the randomized.
Well, you should have. Planting plan, I think, for our, for our purposes, it could subject to change, I guess, slightly. We just put it on the, sort of.
Anyone from the public?
So Ryan Mellet and Three O Eight Station Road. So we're back here and we're constantly fighting about the same now and I stated here during this meeting. Tonight and others, that we are currently actively changing and altering the buffer every single week. We put stakes now in it where we are twenty-five feet, getting from the fifty feet behind that is on the property. And we are mowing it every week. We are not allowing buffer just to be the buffer and stay the same. This has been a problem the whole entire time. Originally, this property had trees there. The property was not owned by the applicant. The applicant then took the trees and cut them down. They went onto our property and cut them down and created a bigger berm than what's there now. Now we are asking for purchase. This was a self-induced, self-causing problem. At the time of the property, uh, claim of the property, our family, my family, was paying the taxes on the land where the parking lot was put in. We subdivided off this property. The piece of property is now mine and my husband Scott's. That property. Then, and finding out when we were taking that off of the main farm. Was not owned by us, even though we were paying taxes on it. We understand that. We get that. The applicant went and then claimed land and got the land. I get that. They removed the parking lot, yes. Now, once the parking lot was removed, because it was told to be removed to go back to the original site plan. We are still actively mowing this property. We let grass grow, but we're actively mowing the fifty-foot buffer. This is the problem. We're not letting things just grow. I understand putting trees in it, but we are still going against the town code and what is put in there for the agricultural buffer being fifty foot around our farm. So I get it, but the problem is this applicant keeps doing whatever they want, whatever they want, and then asking for forgiveness or coming here or going there. And constantly bringing up the fact that they're nice so far and they depend on it. We understand it. We get it. But the whole fact, the problem is, we are still doing whatever we want. So I could go to my property tonight and cut down all those salt trees and if they fall on their property, then what? Thanks.
Thanks.
No, sorry.
Question? What does, I know we, we, uh, we went back and made the buffer target. It was fifty feet.
We, uh, we went back and made the buffer target. It was fifty feet down. Is there anything in there? Was states that this guy be like the law and that's the meditation? Is there anything in the code that states other than just giving a good input? Anything else you know that, wanna read it?
I mean, everyone actually saying.
So I, I can, I can read exactly what it says. The buffer area as part of the new residential or other non-farm use. Which again, this is not a new non-farm use, but. That aside. Shall consist of an enhanced setback. Of at least fifty feet and at the discretion of the planning boards up to a hundred feet depending on the type of agriculture or farm use. The topography and the proposed design of such buffer. So it says that it needs an enhanced setback of at least fifty. Then it goes on to say, appropriate landscaping and or legislative screening shall be established. And maintained on such buffers. Such buffer and its standards shall be noted on any approved subdivision flat or site plan. So my contention is this setback needs to be fifty feet, but that doesn't mean that the entire fifty foot. That back area needs to be planted. We are closing the twenty-five so that we still have ample space around the building, which would be thirty feet at that point.
Thank you, thank you. Paul, anything? So we, you know, we'll be public hearing out. Is there a couple of things you wanna? You wanted to get also, right?
Well, there are, we still have.
Kind of just breaking for that for once I get. So in the town code about the fifty foot agricultural buffer is that there's no noise. So that's where the coverage comes in where you can't necessarily maintain it and you can't promote.
It's already been, I, I, I'm thinking it's already been set. And they agreed to that, I believe. They agreed to that in one of the other meetings.
The, the applicant is stating that that area since we marked it off has not been touched since last month.
Okay, so yes, no, maybe so. We don't know. Well, we're getting, again, we're getting to a different side of it, so. Um, I would suggest that at this point, we push the public hearing off and. You have anything else you wanna add to that?
The only thing I would add, I think the board really needs to reflect. One more is for landscaping. I think, you know, there is. No requirement that the entirety of the buffer. Has to be planted in the trees. Uh, I defer to Dave, obviously, as the zoning officer. But um, my reading on it, it, yeah.
Well, we did it for last month to have, have somebody come in, a landscaper and propose us, um, you know, solution to the problem.
And so you have a start to that. I think Sal's uh, right, you know, seeing that as a plan being planned.
Yeah, I agree, agree.
And then you guys can decide whether it's enough or the trees solid up or.
Yeah, so I guess with regard to the direction that we're heading in and the width that we have. Um, again, it is state, if anybody wants to go out and take a look at it, it's. So it's clearly marked where we're proposing the edge of the buffer to be. And I guess I would just ask the board to consider, because again, we would like to move forward, but if. If the buffer has to be up to the building, then we have a whole different. Application before the board. So to go ahead and address all that engineering concern from the other details that were in the memo. Were not necessarily.
I'm trying to speak for myself, right? At the input from rest of the board, but I think that we've already established that fifty foot. Now, it's just what, going to go in that. That state where you're going to provide the vegetation. We wanna see what that looks like before we can either add to it or, you know what I mean?
So the twenty-five foot buffer is.
Twenty-five, so not the whole, that you have the thirty-five going to the building, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you designated that growth area, right?
Yeah, um, maybe two. What do you need the thirty feet for? I guess that would be, it's just an appropriate question. I think they're kind of like. Uh, round out why twenty-five is what's proposed, what's the rationale for. Uh, not claiming the other thirty feet.
I think we had a road we suggested going back there.
It was for fire access, I mean, the minimum fire access road is twenty feet wide. And so, and obviously you don't wanna be.
I just, I think it's for somebody.
My, sorry. I just took a moment of clarification. I'm sorry. When was it decided that it didn't have to be fifty feet?
I'm gonna say we discussed it.
So that, that's my concern because the information that's getting put out there is basically stating as the way I'm hearing it is that it doesn't have to be fifty foot. So that's my concern. It's a property owner next door and the farm next door is that now we're talking hypotheticals without an actual decision. And this board stating that it doesn't have to be a forty foot buffer on this part of the property. And I go back to my iteration before that the new parcel that's being added on to this parcel have a hundred foot buffer on the backside of.
I know that, that the board is, um, has never reached the fact. That we need to have the enhanced setback of fifty feet. That is unequivocal. It's part of the code and I understand that. The twenty-five feet is with regard to the area of planting and the area of base that needs to be vegetated. So they're two different things.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of me, there's gonna be a, so there's gonna be a line on the map, right? Or a buildings outside back. Now, what goes on in that fifty foot buffer, we're gonna decide over the next. Yeah, right. Some particles you planted, a part of it might not. But I guess, depending on what we, but the buffers is definitely. It was five feet that, that we were talking about at one of the meetings, don't mind me, but what are you gonna do with five feet? So when we talked about having that, um, the road going in the back for fire access. That's where we came into that space, at least having that space for that uh, vehicle to get around the building. That's really what was that, so. And you, I believe they leave this space also for garage or something that was.
That's going away.
For a certain amount of time.
Yeah, for a certain amount of time, that's gonna go away.
Having, having that down in writing would be helpful and I think the reading that Sal is suggesting is consistent with the plain. Meaning of the language.
Right.
Well, it's, it's pretty clear. You need a setback of two feet, then you need to have appropriate landscaping within that. In order to achieve this, the buffer involves.
I would take that one step further and make sure that it's clearly labeled on the path. Hey, anyone else in the public? On behalf, we're against the project. Okay, we'll push the public hearing off till next month again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the villages PRD site plan.
One eighty South.
Oh, you know, I apologize. Sorry, one eighty South.
Motion to adjourn?
No, I just feel that way. Um, one eighty South Street LLC commercial site plan. One eighty South Street, section block and lot number eighty-seven point three, there's five, there's fourteen. Uh, public hearing has been opened and it's an unlisted action. Would we ask anyone from? Eighty, one speed on the hands of the project. He's trying to speak on behalf of the project at one eighty.
Yes, we were looking for our final approval. I submitted.
Could you come up here, sir?
I'm sure.
State your name. Come on, you've been doing this before, right?
He's good at it.
Peter Madison, Matt in construction, I've been, been engineer, he's not here. He has some of the building rendering. Last time we were here.
Dave?
Yeah, so the only thing I think that um, I still had hanging out there, which I think you, you, uh, you and I and your client spoke about was a fence. On the southern uh, property line.
Yeah.
Um, I would suggest to the board that uh, we condition that in. You have an approval. Crafted for you tonight in, in case you're so inclined. Um, but the uh, there was a, um, we did talk about putting a fence there. So that when the trucks came around the back of the property, if they had headlights on, they wouldn't sweep across the, the properties to the south. Uh, there are residential properties in that direction. Um, so i- if the, if the applicant is.
They were agreeable.
Yeah, as I recall that second, so. Uh, we would just condition that as I, I had a pencil in here, so.
Thank you. Anyone else from staff that I knew? Well, I mean, I did. I think I still have some comments outstanding that need to be addressed. Okay, I'm concerned in terms of some water. Um, there's also this question of a pipe brought into the property that.
Yeah, so I, um, I actually crafted something and, and um, I didn't circulate it because it was literally. You know, late this afternoon, uh, one of the conditions is should any damage occur to a concrete pipe that drains the water from the west side of South Street underground? And discharges towards the stream on the east side of the property at one eighty South Street. The applicant will repair and or replace that line in order to maintain the longstanding drainage flow pattern.
Again, my, my, and that works for me. My concern is that they had some some more stuff in that area that may need to be reconfigured as well, so. I mean, we.
Well, you know what, Andy, when we're doing this, you're coming, y- your company's coming with me to, to do that site work investigation, so. We'll figure it out. I mean, in my opinion, I think we can figure it out in the field. Uh, it's a very own pipe. Um, Mr. Adola came to me the other day. I actually have a pretty good idea of where that pipe is. Um, he has a great video of the water draining in there and there was a lot of water going that hole. Um, and we think it goes straight across the property. I have a photo of the map. I'll share with Andy. Um, but uh, ultimately, it's gonna be, you know, as they're working out there, we find out that the border backing up. Everything stops until we figure out why. In my, in my opinion.
So we can address that as a condition into the resolution.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, the, the goal really is to keep the, the longstanding drainage functioning. And I think, you know. Between my building permit and, and Andy's help with the, you know, inspections, we'll get there.
And that'll be on the map too.
Uh, well, it's not currently on the map because they'd have to actually uncover it on the ground or scope it. Um, what it's.
Show. I, I think it really should show.
We can do that for the final map.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for your signature, sure.
Yeah. I think it needs to be.
And the fantasy.
Address that it's there and that they are going to assume responsibility of maintaining.
Yeah, that's fine. And uh, Peter, um, here, uh, we'll put the fence on the map as well. I'll send you a note on it. Okay.
So you're currently in easement?
So, yeah, that's, so that's, yeah, that's funny. So there's never been one. Right? Um, that, you know, the map that I originally saw, uh, you know, the cost department and Chuck can help us with this. Cost department owned the property on the other side, put the drainage in, which ran across the other side, which I think your family owned, Chuck. So it was sort of a, you know, a handshake deal before, you know, South Street became what it is today. Um, I think it might be wise to have an easement. Uh, you know, across for the other property to maintain. The hiccup is, and this is my biggest fear, is that that line may run directly next to the loading dock. Um, but you know, the map that Chuck showed me the other day, that, you know, that line runs. Right along that property line, almost as if they followed the line. Um, if I recall correctly, and it, it's probably pretty close, so easement or not. You know, and that's why I say if, if you're okay, well, that's what, that's, that's what my, that's what my point was in this note. Um, if it's damaged, uh, they're gonna repair and, and or replace. And if it's to, to be placed, we're gonna move, make it move it. Right, so because.
No, for that, that is damage or it need to be request or to.
I think that's why I think the easement and, and responsibility of maintenance could be paid in.
We're gonna need an easement for Minnebo's property across South Street all the way to here.
All the way to our stream, that's right.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, um, as much as I don't want to, it's, uh, we gotta, I gotta look at the elevations because. Things like thirty, forty feet high. And is there a sign of level on the building? Or just.
Windows, there is. Second level.
Let's see what I got.
If you have the elevations, good, and, and where they're supposed to be revised elevation drawings that would show the different colors. Um, I believe, I believe it was Sal who said that he wanted something kind of stand up so it didn't look like the big blanket wall going across the building.
Well, we kind of broke it up with windows, um. Very.
Yeah, this is, this is not, uh, Peter and I had this uh, joking conversation the other, uh, last time we met. Uh, this is not what I would call an accurate representation here, um, because the, uh, the building is. The, the, the main entrance will be in this area and this is not a one long wall of, of flatness. Uh, the system they're using, the new, uh, new core system on, on the building is actually, uh, broken up, uh, you know, almost panelized.
But it still misrepresents what we want to approve. I mean, it needs to have something of validity to it. How's that?
Yeah, thi- this is a better, uh, look at the building, uh, facing it from the north side of the building on, on South Street. Actually, this is the other side of South Street.
Now, what were your comments on the face of the building last time? I don't remember. A couple of lines, a layer or something with different color.
Yeah, so look, I, it's, it's. Just, we as a planning board, right, to say. You gotta do something with the elevation. Maybe it's sort of like not offering the solution, but we talked about it a little bit.
Right.
We said that. Yeah, it's like, it's like this, it's like one giant wall and you gotta break it up and I suggested. And you do it any way you want, but I just suggested with the first obvious thing would be like to have a column line like every. Forty feet or something like that, of a different color and have like a little soften, but. You know, we as a plank, we should ask for something, a big building is very flat.
Well, you did though last time. You asked and I think we all agreed with what you requested. And now I'm not seeing it and it's not, it's misrepresenting exactly what it is they're gonna build, so.
Also, is there mechanical on that roof?
Yeah, there will be, but there'll, but there'll be a parapet around it, right? That's required, yeah.
But I, I, I kind of thought I'd break with window bands. Was it, is that, it's really hard to break a metal panel and break it in the middle. And overlap it, it kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah, I can't answer to you how you would do it. We're just saying maybe a panel going from ground elevation to the window. Can you do that?
Well, the one rendering did kind of show two different, not that one, but the one previously. It's something like that on the bottom there, but one would look heavy.
Which one?
Well, here we are giving solutions, but it's not a.
Well, not, no, he, he's actually, he's actually submitted, um, you know, the type of wall structure, that's what it's, this new core. Protocol, uh, I'm looking for a good. Example of it, um, so it's not just a big flat wall. Um, in fact, I, if I have.
It wasn't a ripped panel, it's a ripped panel, so it's not gonna be flat, obviously. But I guess I'm gonna say, I do agree with Sal on this. I think it's something that, um, just something that would look like it would be a column, maybe. Just kind of break up. You know?
Yeah, like something like that last one other time. I think that's what you talked about.
Is, is there an existing drawing that's forward? Do you have that?
We have that for first rendering.
Well, give me a sec, see what the hell I'm at. Not these, right?
That's what we're getting, right? That's, looks like the building.
That, that's the front of the building.
So you see where you have that.
There's the one.
That you're actually.
So basically, it does look like the top building retreats away from the wall, right? Well, that, that shows because we can break it at the window, at the window there. And change the color of the box.
In that area, you can change, uh, you can't change the color from the window down, that may look like. I don't care. I mean, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. A, a red line coming from the top down. Yeah, like a couple of them, they look like some sort of a, you know, building column or something. But I agree, I think it's too flat, especially for the areas in. It's close to the road. And we asked that, I think it was the last time you guys came.
You did, we kind of came back and we, I, you know, I had a great job, like a three foot panel, I'd be so often, I, I can't do that stuff a little bit.
Anyone else? Sam, what do you got? I heard you.
That's what I said.
Yeah, we shouldn't do it. We shouldn't do it. We know what we want. We're asking. Anyone else? No, I agree.
As as I stated before, we did ask this the last time you came in. I see the drawing you have. I think Sal was pretty clear on it the last time, but what he was looking for is a column. Something to show that it's not one large flat building.
Yeah, it could be many different things. Doesn't have to be a column.
But but yeah, I think you should come back to something. Dave? Eddie?
Oh, I'm.
You're off.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I thought we were much closer than this previously.
A little homework for you. Sorry. We're gonna push this off too.
Not a flat wall, kind of like break it up. Alright, maybe the top. Wait from the bottom. I mean, I I can do that. I can do um, an outside condition on the top and inset on the bottom, but on paper shows.
That's the, that's what I'm trying to ask you. I mean, you're telling us and we're looking at a drawing.
Right.
Or a rendering. It's not exactly what you're gonna get. Okay, well, I'm not buying. It's not what we're gonna get. I wanna see what we're gonna get.
With the simple last rendering, showed different two different colors.
You showed the the window band going across.
Window band with a different color over that.
So the space above the window is how much? Uh, but to me, it looks like a pane. That's why I'm saying it. You have a window at the end, maybe a different color.
And I think the other question was asked, what's the elevation?
That's a big spot. It looks like a flat panel. Especially on that road. Don't mind me, I'm being so close to them. That's where I'm going with it. It's gonna be a flat panel. You wanna know, we're gonna. Take a look at nine W and take a look at the storage units. And they actually broke it up a little bit to show there was some depth at least. Uh, excuse me, excuse me. I wasn't saying to do that. I was saying that was a solution they came up with, because we didn't want to see a flat panel there. Although that's not what we're. I made that clear, okay? Yeah, I've been rolling around with your architect movement and having them come back. You're saying this is an architect's rendering, and I'm looking at it. And if that's, if you're telling me that's what we're building, we're building. I'm asking you for a little depth to that. So it doesn't look like a flat panel on that residential road.
Yeah, maybe in this situation, you might look for some samples, color samples.
And I wanna say I thought I saw them at some point. Okay?
Good.
Thanks, thank you. So that, public hearings push off till next month. Next is the villages, the R D site plan, section block and lot number ninety five. So we did a two, there's three. Yes? Or you can, but I'm gonna want, I apologize. We do have a public hearing also, it is open. I forgot that it has to publish the speaker. Say your name. And it was not a right on, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm working on this. First, I wanna thank Dave, and I wanna thank you guys. For recognizing. But I was all going lucky to find that.
Speak with your mind, sir, if you don't mind.
Okay, sorry. Uh. I'm hoping that. The outward structure doesn't worry me as much as what's going on underneath. And from that standpoint. And that. I is very important. For the whole of South Street, it's not just me. It's our neighbors. Right on down along the through Station Road. You guys know it. So I wanna thank the board for being as as diligent as you are. Um, I've said we listen to a lot of this question. And appreciate. All of you guys. Thank you. That's all I got to say. Hey, Mark, did that pay?
Unfortunately, I'm worried that when we give. There's there's an old damage. You can. Ask for permission. Or you can make it forgiven.
Right.
And once they don't add a self permission next to your stuff, and you guys going through that, and I don't wanna see that happen again.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So now we'll go back to the villages, uh, maybe look, anyone else from the public, just to make sure. I. Sure. I'm saying your name.
Hi, my name is Thomas Filadi. Um, I live directly across from one eighty South Street, one eighty four. My biggest concern. I really didn't get much uh, time to date to talk about this, but was this fence that they're in on, try to bring across. Eight feet to me does not sound adequate for tractor trailer coming in. Um, in and out all day long. Before. The ballpoint logistics, um, now it's, it was a prism solar, I believe. One or two tractor trailers a week maybe. And they would have their their supplies. They're gonna be coming in and out all day long, lights already, even on the weekends, and I ain't supposed to be there. Um. There's no ways, there is, there's a concern. It's the first time I'm seeing, which is automatically, um, I think we should let the residents decide as well. Um. See what this building is gonna look like. It's literally in my backyard, so it's that, you know.
Thank you.
I am directly next to the property. So if you're looking across the map with rings. I am to the right of the the building.
He's south, south of it. He's south.
Yeah. These tractor trailers are sweeping my backyard, so that's the cause of concern.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else in the public? The villages are waiting to come up here. Okay, we push that public hearing off the next month. Do they really?
Oh, we've hit you. Franco, get out of my, stay in your lane, Franco.
Villages, the R D site plan, section block and lot number ninety five point two dash two, there's three point two one one. And ninety five point two dash two, there's nine. Uh, we've seen plans here certainly before, and here we are from last week.
You're up. Good evening, thank you very much, um. So uh, there was the workshop last week, the continued public hearing. I think there was a draft resolution that was presented before the board. Um, I think there's been some changes since then. Um, we had just received the copy before the meeting. We reviewed, we have objections to the draft resolution. But I think it's sitting before the board members. So, but we're here for any questions or comments, and obviously the public hearing.
Kelly, Eddie? Now, anyone from the staff? Paul? Okay, we can do that. Dave, anything on you?
Waiting there for public.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing, or it is open, but we'll have someone from the public come up. Anyone from the public like to speak on behalf of the project or against it? Anyone in Zoom land? So now you have nothing from the public. Now, Paul? Where you want me to close the public hearing?
That's what I thought. Um, so as you recall, last week, we did have a draft resolution for the site plan approval. On the villages, P R R D. Um. As as John indicated, we have made, added some uh, additional language to that, which I'll I'll go over. With the board, if if.
Please.
If you want me to. Uh, but just first in terms of an overview, just to remind ourselves where we are. What what we have is the P R D, P R R D that was approved by the town board. And there's certain conditions that come along with that P R R D law that was adopted by the town board. The villages has come in to a site plan review of that. And and they uh, have applied now for New York State D O H license. For an assisted living facility. And they and are uh, moving through that process. Uh, which according to the D O H website. Can take between eighteen and twenty four months. Um. In the meantime, villages has asked for uh. Certain permissions to do uh, construction. They want to do some uh. Immediate construction, essentially keep the contractor that's working on the site. Busy and on the site so they don't. Uh, de-mobilize and have to mobilize again. Uh, so there is some basic infrastructure work that they've asked for permission to do. Um. And then in addition to that, they would like to start building some of the independent living units. Um. On the property and and propose a phase. Construction plan for doing that. So that's their interest. Um, they recognize and you've sprinkled throughout the resolution. That all of this that they do is really at their own risk. And and this John, I'm very accepting of this language. Um. So what we tried to do because of the town's interest, this is a P R R D, as I said. And that means that you have to have. Both the assisted living facility and independent living units. And it's on the entirety of the property, which is considered one lot. That's set in stone by the P R R D law that the town board adopted. Any deviation from that is gonna have to go back to the town board. So. What the planning board is reasonably doing in the resolution that's been drafted. Is setting milestones. For for certain work to allow them to go ahead and do uh, some limited amount of work. To start to build some of the cottages that are part of the project. But but also to say that, for example. Before you get any certificate to occupy. Any of the cottages. The traffic light at Meyer Drive has to be installed. And and that's because of the potential for additional traffic and the concerns that were uh, studied during. Very uh. Diligently and and uh, over a period of a couple of years by the planning board. Um, in terms of the traffic. Traffic studies were done by the applicant. They were reviewed by the plantworks engineer. They were reviewed by New York. Uh, and everybody. That's putting those uh, traffic light in there was important uh, for the project. So there is a requirement that we require that installation before any cottage. Because again, it's a P R R D, you cannot have the independent living units without the assisted living facilities. Based on what the town board authorized. So there is another stocking point in the uh, P R. In 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 what the this resolution would allow for construction of the cottages. And that is to say that in a certain point. And that and that point is before any building permit is issued for phase B. At a certain point. There will be no additional cottages that are allowed to be built. Until that D O H permit is obtained. So so that's really the the kind of overall construct. Of what we had, I proposed to the board and what we uh, looked at last week. Um. But and and what we tried to do in in updating the resolution over the past week. Is some of the takeaways from the board in terms of concerns to try and uh. Address those concerns based on the P R R D law. Based on the applicant's um, acceptance of um. That that it's proceeding at its unrest, based that on the um. You know, is the 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 need for a D O H permanent. As a stocking point for construction of any additional cottages. If. D O H. Is not granted license for this project. There will be a certain number of cottages that will have been built. But no additional cottages will be built. Until they either enter D O H permit. Or go back to the town board. For a change to P R R D law. So thi- this sets that in stone. And and it provides uh, with Dave and I have been referring to as. The hardest of hard starts. You know, because it can only get to that point when you're war. And if they were to come back. For something that's less than a D O H. Uh, licensed facility. If they were to look for uh, senior apartments, for example. Then we would have, we'd be. The the town board would need to establish new density requirements. That are consistent with the zoning code. And would affect. The number of additional uh, cottages that could be built would reduce it substantially. So. I I think the reason, you know, the resolution is drafted, provides an incentive to the applicant. To diligently pursue the D O H licensing to get a D O H license. And to start building that uh, assisted living facility as simply as possible. Um, there there is something that we we talked about a little bit with the applicant. Uh, there is an opportunity under the, under D O H. Uh, licensing, there's a part one phase of licensing and a part two phase of licensing. And if you get a green light. At the end of the. First phase. You can see early commencement of the work. So there is potential that at that point in time, they might see that early commencement of work. It's in their interest to do so if they feel that the risk. That there's a likelihood that they're gonna get their license, if they're getting good feelings from D O H. You know, they wanna get this, uh, John and I talked about this today. They wanna get this whole project built. As fast as they can, because that's their business. Now, so they have an incentive, but they gotta be mindful of the rest. Um, and and the planning board and the town uh, control. Um, how this all happens based on the resolution that you have in hand before you. So that's, that's my overview. I'm sorry for being long-winded. Um, we do have two resolutions. Uh, the first one that you would have to approve. Is a lot line adjustment resolution. And and the one thing I'll note on this, and in plus to the site financing region as well. Is that uh, you do have different owners of these different lots. It is not. All the lots not owned by the villages from the Hudson Valley. They're owned by separate LLCs. Um, so we would be adding that up in the heading. You would be adding the names of those uh, actual owners, but the the villages is the applicant, the purpose is to grow. Uh, the lot line adjustment, and the same thing. So uh, this is a simple lot line adjustment. Um. And. We should reverse go through and and approve that at the order of some of the line to use. And maybe we should reverse go through and and approve that at the order of some of the lines to use up. Uh the second is the updated site plan resolution that we approved uh updated from last week. Um there was a few paragraphs of that that I'd like to highlight, if if that's alright.
Yeah, and then I have a discussion.
So if you if you look at the first page of the resolution, the second uh paragraph there is new. Um and and there was a concern at the last board meeting about the whole concept of. Just being treated as a single parcel. And so I went back to the P R R do- P R R D law that the town board adopted. And so consistent with that law. Uh the lands in the P R R D comprising the site. Shall be considered as a single parcel. For the purpose of applicable zoning requirements established by the P R R D law. Just sort of, there's no question about uh the potential that. Uh what the independent living units could be subdivided off from uh the assisted living facility. There was a lot, the zoning is a P R R D, they wanna do something different. You know, have to go back and see the supervisor and let.
Quick down word.
The down word, yes.
Check confirm the date on that where as well, March twenty-three.
The twenty twenty-two, no, thank you, Bill, big thanks. Yeah, so you're used to that. Alright, and then uh the top of the second page. Uh the P R R D consistent with P R R D law. This has been really nailed down in usings that were approved through the P R R D law, so it's very clear. And and what's been proposed by the applicant is a New York State D O H license to assist in living facility that contains. Assisted living, health and memory care services as well as an adult care center. Adult daycare center and independent living units. Okay, so that's just, that's consistent with the P R R D law. Uh skip down uh to the third paragraph. This is something, again, that came from the P R R D law. And and to address some of the concerns and the neighbors that were raised in the uh work uh. Public hearing. Uh dense vegetative screening shall be required for side rear setback areas. To limit visual impacts and adjoining residential business in accordance with the zoning code. Uh for applicable zoning code provision. Now, I note that we already have uh landscaping that's composed on the overall site plan. But as you are looking at the different phases of the project. Being seen particular in particular, that are closer up towards the the neighbors up on Apple Lane. Um that is something that that the board will have the discretion to add to as it needs fit. Um in in order to meet your screening goals. Uh skipping over to page three, first one paragraph, this is uh. This is basically was was to talk about the the appropriateness of um conditions. Ensure that both principal uses and approve that being the assisted living units. And the independent uh assisted living facility and the independent living units are undertaken by the applicant. To make sure that the traffic light is installed, to make sure that the sidewalk's installed. And for its part, the applicant seeks to proceed at its own risk. With construction of some of the independent living living units. Subject to future site plan approvals and conditions for each of phases being through after the P R R D. The re- rest here, I've I've filled in the the plans, the actual plans that you're approving. Uh that's the uh provided by the applicant at this would be by staff. Um bottom of page four. Just a note again, uh see for. Prior to signing uh the group site plans and after meeting conditions below. The the applicant may fully at its own risk undertake certain. Uh infrastructure work uh that is listed on the top of page five. Uh including installation of a construct on his Meyer Drive. We took out Apple Lane, that was in the draft last week. Uh Apple Lane just as a point of uh information uh will only be. Uh used for emergency access purposes in case of a fire and that sort of thing. And and so uh that that's that. Uh I I will reinforce on the bottom of page six. Uh second to last paragraph. That uh we infer the result that new certificate of occupancy for phase A shall be issued. Prior to proof of installation by the applicant. On the traffic signal at the intersection of New York State Route nine W and Meyer Drive. And the top of page seven, first paragraph, adding in the paragraph that said, just to be clear. That approval of the P R R D is limited to the applicant's proposal for an assisted living facility. And independent living units, any proposed deviation may require an amendment to the P P R R D. As determined by the town board and or an amendment to the site plan approval is determined by the planning board. Uh the next one, two, three conditions um. Are established uh construction schedule limits. Consistent with what what had been done for the assisted living facility when you all approved that. Uh we also require adequate screening for neighboring properties and uh dash, dust control. Um we dealt with the, the these are all, these three conditions. The uh construction schedule. Uh ongoing cons- consultation with U C A to try and provide. Mass transit accommodations for employees and residents in the P R R D. And a uh swift uh requirement. And making sure that every slip includes permission for onsite monitoring by the town. These three conditions all address the the comments that came from Ulster County. Uh so because we had indicated otherwise that those comments are addressed and incorporated in in um this resolution.
Well, I don't see the other one as far as the um E V chargers and stuff like that.
The energy, there's that's going to run to. Let me have that. Thank you, Scott. That is a condition. Ah, see. Yeah, uh and and the energy, I did have that, I should have applied that, that was a big catch. Um before uh you sign the site plans um for phase A. Um or actually for a building permit to be issued, um the app needs provided an energy conservation plan. With proposed measures to reduce the part of footprint of the P R R D. And that's consisting with what you had approved. For the assisted living facility when we did a special use permit to that.
Well, can I, do you have anything to ask a question?
Sure, regarding U C A and private property, is there any chance that. You can't have bus stops in uh the villages that. They got things, I know. They mentioned something last week, county offering, they cannot go on private property, so it's a separate agreement?
Yes, yeah, yes, that's accurate, and actually Paul has baked into this approval. Um that the applicant will be responsible for ongoing negotiations in the future with U C A. Uh you know, if you can expand its service and we're and the town's aware of that, we'll go out to the applicant and be like, look. You know, we're gonna work with U C A to get a bus stop here, there, or wherever. Um you know, probably on nine W, uh or even up onto their site if there's, you know, a quick way out. Um to a place of a bus stop and shelter. So yes, it'll be an ongoing discussion, U C A's not interested right now.
And and one of the things that uh the planning board will have the ability to do is every time they come back for a phase. Ask the question, how small would you have? Is there anything, uh what have you done? And you know, basically document or make sure that you document, the final documents. Um the efforts that are made and 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 pass them as you deem appropriate.
Should mitigate traffic here, and so.
So that is the the site plan resolution. Like the previous interview, the date of the approval of the P R D was twenty twenty-three.
Thing to do, I think they have years ago.
Well, you've been here a long time.
You know, years ago.
So the plan, yeah, the planning board made its uh findings, that's right, the planning board made its findings. Um on the the P R R D back in December of twenty twenty-two, so. And time wise. The opposite. I mean, so the base in plan is a batch uh as um kind of key. And and that would allow uh was subject to separate. Review by the planning board, separate signing of the site plans by the chairman. Separate imposition of additional conditions as determined appropriate by the planning board. Um phase A is built into the resolution. Phase B would or say phase B. And phase C one and phase C two would all be allowed to be uh constructed. And to obtain uh certificates of occupancy. Uh at that point. Prior to any issuance of a building permit for phase B. A D O H permit would have to be obtained. And a New York State D O T right-of-way permit for the sidewalks would also have to be obtained. And then. Prior to any certificate of occupancy for phases B and F. After each of those stages are reviewed by the planning board, each of the site plans. For each respective things are signed by the chair and satisfaction of any conditions. Uh if you know, the the planning board may deem appropriate. They would be able to construct those final units. But no certificate of occupancy could be issued until a certificate of occupancy is also issued. From the New York State D O H license, assisted living facility. And pre-constructive of the New York State D O T approved sidewalks is provided to the building department.
Okay, any discussion on board? Can you see the uh.
Bad Matt? Now you can make me look. Is that in here? Yeah.
Anyone else?
What are the actual dates? Health Department and the D O T, what are the exact dates? I'm sorry, the days of what?
Speaking of my Jerry, do you mind?
The days for the uh D O T permits and the days for the uh health department, you have those actual days exactly by. Applied?
Yeah.
Um as far as.
Department of Health license, yes, it was filed um, I guess, right before the third Thursday in July. Where whatever day, wherever the date that is.
What's the uh D O T?
Uh like two thousand twenty, I don't have the exact date.
Can you provide receipts of the actual planning?
The town, you that you have. So D O T is the opposite, so you submit to D O T and you don't pay the fees until the end when they review the project. So all of the fees went in um.
D O T application was, what did you say?
I think it was twenty nineteen or forty, but I don't know the original start date on the application.
Jerry, you're looking for filing, sorry, when you were filing.
D O T is opposite, so you send everything in, you start your application process with them, which was back in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen. Um you advance the project and then they tell you when you're ready to submit the permit, they don't ask for the permit until the project is accepted. So the permit application, um I can get the date was.
This is land easements or railways that.
I don't have those things, pardon me, I have to edit here.
My my only concern is that. You know, we had a lot of people coming and out of here tonight, and they all had homework, and didn't give them what they wanted, they had to go back. And I kind of feel uneasy moving forward. Once again, without these permits is going on for. So it's a big concern, why and why is the project so bad? Maybe have to grant this before they get their permits, and people come in and out of here and you send them away to get their permits. Uh that's my only concern, I'm I'm kind of concerned, because I kind of feel like a little vulnerable if they start building this stuff. Without permits. My concern.
When I just, a lot line revision that I've talked about. And you, that I talked about in the beginning, how much land are you picking up?
What? Self storage facility?
Yeah, you're you're heading.
Yeah, it's about four acres on top of my head, I have to check my notes.
And the total amount of land you have right now, before you do that.
So the land that's gonna be left for the self-storage facility is like a hundred and ninety thousand square feet. It's only that all requires fifteen thousand. Land with all requirements.
Go ahead, Sal. There's there's sort of a camp out fifteen thousand.
That's the. Subject zone, we listen, general business zone.
Yeah, that's.
So you were just saying it.
Anything else? Anyone can say, Dave?
No, I think we're good.
Um yeah, probably hearing so well, go ahead, Mark.
I saw a quick question, is this a state, I don't have the paper in front of me, is this a state where affordable housing that's getting marked and delineated?
No, each one of the zones, if I'm not mistaken, will consist of so many affordable housing units.
That's true.
So. They were going to designate where they were going to be in each zone.
Yes. So one of the conditions of the approval before the site plan gets signed for phase A is the submission.
Right.
Of a house portable housing plan.
We're not at that stage yet. Thank you. And it should, it should be ten percent.
It's ten percent and then when we have to split it up evenly amongst the phases. So that way there's not a high concentration.
Right.
Of affordable housing in one phase and because you want to spread it out. And that's all according to your plan.
So don't put them all on the same borders.
Yeah.
So, all right. Um, motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The none, public hearing closed. Um, now I would like to either make a motion to read the.
Lot line.
Briefly, lot line revision first?
Yes. Lot line revision briefly. Okay. I'll read the resolved clause.
Thank you.
Um. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations in New York State town law and where hereby. Range requirement for a public hearing on the final subdivision plan. Uh, which you can do with a lot line adjustment. Be further resolved pursuant to the subdivision regulations in New York State town law. The town would hereby approve initially the final subdivision plan for project. Comply with lot line adjustment and easement plan prepared by our, our group last devised by eleven twenty twenty three. Be further resolved in different subdivisions in New York State town law. Uh, playing with chairman's here by obvious time in the flat. On satisfaction of following conditions. Signature of approved plaque, inappropriate blocks. Who were involved in fire easement showing on the approved plaque that the town of Lloyd Town Attorney has upon substance. Paying the fees owed to the town Floyd, um. Be further resolved pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the potential report, the approved final plaque, together with all provisions. Uh, with the old state clerk's office and within ninety days after it's signed by the planning board chairman. Um. Be further resolved, six copies should be provided. Uh, on, on the short, they have been. Endorsed by the Ulster County Clerk shall be obtained and transmitted to the town clerk. Be, be further resolved that any part of this resolution is known by a court of competent jurisdiction, remain shall remain. Full course of fact. Uh, in five days, the effect of eight copies shall be filed with the town of Lloyd Town Clerk and copy. Shall be mailed to the applicant during the same five day period. And this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion to accept the resolution.
Vote.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Uh, any extensions? Resolution passed.
And. Uh, like as we move forward.
Please.
Certain resolution. Um. Uh, as part of the, now therefore be resolved. Based on the obligation, the findings attached here too, which can be reserved for in New York State town law. The planning board, by ground second, we will be aware of the PRR D. And the chair's initial authorized society file record. Uh, as well as society point simplifying the approved site plans. Where each individual patient with PRD based on the patient plan as may be amended. Improved site plans improved into the entire New York square. These are all dated, last revised by eleven point number three. Uh, skip into page four, be further resolved. At five, the chair signing the approved site plan without the union information flow. The applicant's sole and its own risk is permitted to immediately not contain the infrastructure construction activities on the property. Uh, shown up is a, uh, prepared by our C group dated August ninth, twenty twenty three. And specifically limited to the following activities. Stress management, supply of drive, version of control, segment controls. Um. It's, uh, conducting trading activities, persons and brain plants, installation, retaining all number eleven. Destruction, remodel, independent living units. Uh, and six, we start connecting off construction activities and according to three swift. They, the applicants will meet the following conditions. They need to obtain approval of coverage under the New York State DUC. Speeds general permit for stormwater drift charges. Uh, proof of recording in the Ulster County Clerk's office. On the stormwater control and so maintenance, each new agreement. Um, payment about outstanding escrow charges and application fees. Um, required deposit for inspection fees, submission of fire insurance. Uh, security in a formal manner and满足 satisfaction of the town. Um, to be used by the town in the event that it determines that the above construction activities are not being undertaken or maintained. Compliance to the approved swift. Or for restoration of the property in the event that this site plan approvals shall expire. Um, and also they finally they need to get a building permit and complete a reconstruction meeting with the building department. Be further resolved that the planning board chairman is authorized. To sign the approved site plans on fulfillment of the following conditions by the applicant. Ulster County Health Department approval for all proposed sewer and water improvements. Proof of reporting of the approved length, lot line adjustment map. Through the Ulster County Clerk's office and submission of an affordable housing plan original to the building code. Be further resolved that the planning board chairman is authorized to sign the plans for phase A of the PRR D. Including independent living units and, uh, building for the pump station. And the plans for the site work and infrastructure activities for phase B and C. After receiving from the applicant. Proof of satisfaction regarding technical panels from the town's engineer. Proof of, of a New York State DOT permit for installation of the traffic signal. At the intersection of Meyer Drive and nine W. A copy of a fully instituted amended developer's freedom of being out in the town. For the PRR D. Proof of reporting in the Ulster County Clerk's office of any necessary utility or other easement from the PRR D. Including conservation use of the technicals in the town. Proof of recording in the Ulster County Clerk's office of deed restrictions for the parcel. Enforcing the PRD with respect to eligibility requirements for residents personally to the zoning card. Be further resolved upon the planning board's chairman signing of the site plans for phase A of the PRR D. The site work and infrastructure of their basis B and C, the town's supported voice law. In the, in the issue on the building permits, building permits and all the requirements. To allow the work to proceed after receiving from the applicant. A final utility plan showing all its utilities. Including approximate locations of ground mounted transformers and electrical systems. Once confirmed with central buzz Hudson. Written program for maintenance of all buildings and lands within the PRR D. Including open space and recreation areas, the main street, the walkway, and driveways. Parking areas and other county utilities and facilities. This program shall fit the responsibility for maintenance program on a legal way shall demonstrate. The satisfaction of the town board, how such responsibility will be legally valid and enforceable. Under town against such enemy or succession interest. Uh, and the energy conservation plan. With proposed measures to reduce the power and footprint of the PRD. Consisting with, uh, Ulster County Planning Board recommendations. And payment of any recreation, escrow or other fees. With respect to phase A of the PRR D of the site work. And infrastructure through the easy B and C.
Paul, do you want me to take over?
No. Not yet. Be further resolved, the most certificate of occupancy for phase A of the PRR D shall be issued. By the building department prior to satisfaction of all conditions. Proof of satisfaction to the town's engineer. That occupants can move in the avenue pump station and they completed proof of installation. By the applicant of the traffic signal at the intersection of New York State Route nine W and Mayor Drive. As near, New York State DOT authorized operation. Be further resolved that no building permit and certificate compliance. May be issued by the building department for any remaining portion of the project. Except after planning board approval, including the position reasonable condition. Uh, including the requirement of, uh, payment of any evacuation as there are other fees. The separate phases of the project and the assisted learning facility. And the chairman deciding of site plans for each such phase. Through the college and the patient plan. And for the six free living facility as the event may be amended with planning board rules, subject to conditions. Provided in the basic plan that are otherwise reasonable imposed by the planning board and. Be further resolved that this approval in the PRR D is limited. Not against proposal in New York State DOT license assistant working facility. And independent living units that any provision they require amended to the PRR D. As determined by the town board, point where the, when the site plan approval is determined by the planning board. Be further resolved that instruction, uh, may undertake them three days between seven AM and five PM. Instruction shall be out of speed and thus shown off as we patrol. Is determined by the town's permanent personnel officer. Uh, be further resolved that after, uh. While based on consultation, after consultation with UCAT. No permission for mass transit accommodations on the site which peaceful at this time. Um. The applicant shall have a continuing obligation to consult with UCAT. During the mass transit accommodation for employees who residence in the PRR D. Be further resolved that any swift in the PRR D shall include provisions for on-site monitoring. By the town during construction as deemed appropriate and necessary by the town. Be further resolved, there was any part of this resolution was involved by a court. Uh, remain shall, uh, in the fact. Uh, be further resolved, it was required by New York State town law. Um, a copy of this resolution shall be filed in, uh, Townwood's Clerk's office. Uh, within five days after this resolution was printed. And shall also be sent to the applicant. Be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank the motion to accept the resolution red.
Vote.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna do a roll call. Lambrose?
Now?
No.
Phil?
I.
Franco?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Carl?
Aye.
Jerry? No. Thank you. Note, resolution passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It will all go.
It has.
Ain't, ain't over yet.
No.
No, no, no.
Just a minute, we can.
Don't want to take a minute. Really old. Yeah, you really lost.
Although you're listening to us, we've talked about a few minor technical amendments. Uh, before you acquit, uh, motion, uh, is authorized. Minor technical amendment is subject to the, the jury.
Thank you.
Uh. Final consignment.
Okay, so how do I just say, um, motion to accept? Minor adjustment amendments that are in?
I, I, I have a technical, uh, modification.
Technical modifications, kind of a motion to accept. Vote. All favor? I'm sorry, second, second, he's like. Thanks, Bill. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. To oppose and, um, and the extensions? See none? Anything? Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
And. If I find any more, just shoot them over here.
The agenda is short term rental, the public hearings are open. Um. We have Louis Perez, one thirty four South Street. Anyone here to speak on that application?
I'm here, Louis Perez. Good night. Buddy? Good, thank you so much.
So we, we have anyone from the public to speak on this property or not? Against it? None? Can I have someone make a motion to close the public hearing?
Vote.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two.
Um, any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing's closed. Do you have a? You want me to do somebody for you, Paul? If you agree. You know, I'm gonna get one to you.
I don't have a problem. I read, I'll just read the resolve.
Thank you.
Be further resolved pursuant to SDR regulations in New York State town law and town plan. Board Chairman and hereby authorized decided special use permit. Proving the use of the property located at one thirty four South Street for short term rental. For max, maximum occupancy of two guests. First day applying satisfaction with the following conditions. A, payment of any fees. Shall be made prior to operation, including but not limited to recreation, escrow fee owed to the town of Lloyd and. Be further resolved that after, after this time by the planning board chairman. The special use permit shall remain in effect for two years. It may be renewed pursuant pursuant to Code Section one hundred point four point one S. By issuing of a SPR permit by the code enforcement officer. And be further resolved that if any part of this resolution is the multi court. A, a multi court of competent jurisdiction, remainder of this resolution shall remain in full force in effect. And be further resolved that within five days of the effective date of resolution. Copy shall be filed in the office of town. Town Lloyd Town Clerk and a copy of said resolution shall be mailed to the applicant. Within the same five day period. And be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion to accept the resolution red. Second.
Jerry.
Thank you, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Resolution has been passed. Congratulations. And bring your SPR.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Bud Brimberg, five Felsen Lane. Um. What year did I get?
Yes.
If you. I think we went through this one pretty good the other day. We're just looking to motion the open public hearing.
I would like to point out that Bud, um, who's a funny, funny man. Uh, did, did turn me on to a movie, which, um, in his words, and I'm gonna quote you, Bud. Uh, it's not porn, uh, but the movie was shot at the house and it's called Swallow. It's a psychological thriller. I have not yet watched it, uh, but there are stills online and I encourage you all to go look at it because it does a great job to the house. Um, so. I just wanted, I wanted to get a little piece like we did last week. We're fine with it. It might have been Bud. But, uh, anyway, uh, I just wanted to. Let you all know that.
The other, to be, to be clear, the only reason I said it wasn't porn.
Yeah, I had, thank you.
All right, let's move on. We're good. Okay. Both the public hearing?
Vote.
Thank.
Yeah.
You want to speak on behalf of it, sir?
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah. All right, so the public hearing's still open.
Uh, just push the button, Mike, sorry.
Microbe is okay. Um, here to speak and support the fund. We work together now, I can be the property manager. Local building available, I have the resources to be the local representative, we need to bend pictures, any issue. Um, as required by the code of the church. Person to show. Good day.
Good day.
Great.
Awesome, Matt.
Hey, awesome.
Great.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, shit.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions?
None.
Right, he's back.
You guys are repaying it, you're all here.
Go ahead.
What is up? With the type two secret action. Uh, be further resolved pursuant to the SPR regulations in New York State town law. Determined on the assignment, uh, further approving the property located at five Felsen Lane for sure. the term is authorized to sign their permit of using property located five Felsen Lane for short term rental to the maximum max, since she gets six guests per day by paying, paying the fees. Uh, owing to the town. Uh, be further resolved that after the sign by the planning board chairman, the special use permit will be in effect two years and three years. The name can be moved, uh, presumed from the zone by the public enforcement officer. Uh, be further resolved that any part of this resolution is involved by a court. Uh, the remainder shall, uh, still be in effect. Be further resolved that in five days in effect containing this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk and also mailed to the applicant. Be further resolved that this resolution will then back immediately.
You can have a motion to accept the resolution, read, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're here, Monday.
Any extensions? Resolution passes, read. Next. So these are, we're gonna open public hearings today and they're open, right?
Yeah, you did at the workshop.
Oh, wow, I don't remember this one. Oh, oh, I remember that now. That's right. So, info. At Garwell, I've been trying to say their name, I apologize, I'm looking. And it's one fourteen Volley Pointers Road, and I have someone open. Did we look at this property? Uh, we couldn't see, are they here today to speak on behalf of it?
Good question, let's find out. Sorry. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. That's twenty eight Tano, so I guess not, so.
We're gonna push this one off again till next month.
I guess so.
I'd like to hear a little bit about it.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you have the, uh, sorry, this is John Visha for twenty eight Tano Drive?
Nope, not yet.
Wrong, not yet.
Not yet, okay, got it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're postponed about for John next. So, um, we'll push this one till next month, alright? Next is Sagar Sha, twenty eight Tunnel Drive. Again, I hope I didn't put your name. Could you speak on a happier project?
Yes, good afternoon, board, my name is John Visha, uh, my husband is Tagarsha, um, and he and I, um, you know, are, um, operating, um, the, you know, uh, short term rental, um, together. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this project. Um, it's a four bed, um, house that we bought mainly because, you know, we've traveled to that, we, we live in New York City and we love traveling to upstate New York for our getaways and fell in love with the area around New Paltz, um, and when we were looking for a second home, you know, we, we, we got this house. And, um, you know, we often come there on the weekends ourselves and, you know, we thought it was also a great opportunity um, to set up a short term rental business, um. That's I mean, I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions that you might. Oh, I see. Oh.
Yeah, I don't remember how many. How many, you said it was four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms.
And you're looking for?
Four, four bedrooms, yes.
How many people are you looking to occupy them?
Eight.
Alright.
And it's in?
This is actually an old.
It's water sewer.
Okay, right. Okay. And, um, clearly signed on the house saying, um, your address?
Yeah.
Yes.
Something outlined in your property, so your neighbors aren't, people aren't going to your Navy. Well.
E, yes, we have a, we have a clear printed plaque, um, that's, oh, my husband's on.
Join the meeting.
Yes.
Apologies for the confusion, yes, uh, for, uh, this is actually an old picture back from, I think it's from twenty fifteen or seventeen on Google Maps.
This is an old picture, so I'm just doing it for the house, all that stuff, that's gone.
Okay.
Yes.
We're not seeing a very appealing picture of your house right now.
No, I, um, I, if I had the ability to share a link right now, I.
It's super okay, because all that stuff's gone. I, I put this up for the, uh, home, the neighborhood and the, uh, the landscape fence on the sun.
Sure.
Anybody got any questions, anyone else? Huh? Public hearing, motion open or? That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for public, anyone from the public want to speak on behalf or against the project?
More background? This house looked like that for a long time until they bought it.
Okay. Very good. Okay, see none, can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Vote.
Second, thank you, Sal. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any additions? Very good. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, you can, you know what, I have to, sorry. Go ahead.
You know what, just adjourn.
I think I shook it for a bit, I haven't eaten dinner yet. I apologize, everybody.
That's cool. You should get us some pancakes. Microphone.
Microphone, sir.
Now therefore, be resolved, uh, pursuant to the F P R regulations in New York State town law, the term is authorized to sign the special use permit appearing in youth of property located in plain, uh, drive for short term rental to the maximum max into the eighth step to the state on payment of, uh, any fees owed to the town Floyd. Uh, be approved resolved that after the sign, your chairman, uh, the firm has a valid in effect for two years, it may be renewed personally given the home comes by the record enforcement officer. Be further resolved that any part of this resolution is involved by a court. Uh, the remainder shall, uh, still be in effect. Be approved resolved that will imply that it's in effect in this resolution to copy shall be filed with the town clerk and also mailed to the applicant. And this resolution shall, uh, be in effect immediately.
Uh, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? See none, this resolution is passed, welcome. I believe we have another public comment. And it's Jiminy, he's kind of speakless.
That's not why, he's been in here for a month.
I'm sorry. My only question is really false benefit to all of our benefits. But there's some reason that must be the resolution revamed to be set for the time. Approving the resolution form circulated to the board.
We have to get him on record.
Oh, yeah, but you can reference him. We could.
I don't know why we're reading them, it seems.
Yeah, it has to be, uh, a couple of years ago when I read from the beginning to the back. Yeah.
Even the footnotes.
There was somebody that said we should read the whole thing, and I think that's why I did it at that time.
Yeah.
And then we went to be further involved.
Right. Because that's all you really need for records, it's all, right?
And, uh, and, and, I'm sorry, occasionally it's helpful for the public. Um, who are here, it will, not tonight, obviously, but, um, you know, I think, um.
It's the chairman's office.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah, again, I think you, you, the board as a whole could judge the tenor, if the public's engaged and interested in what's you guys are deciding, but I think reading is great, but I'd also love to have been out here two hours ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's all on the resolutions, but we had.
Mostly.
No disagreements. Yes, it's a matter of, of course, uh, okay.
Well, I will consider that. Motion.
There we go.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm messing with you, it's my.